Okay, thank you. Our next order of business is public communication. The city council welcomes participation in its meeting. Comments shall be limited to three minutes for any person that wishes to address the council on a matter that is not on the agenda. Do we have anybody with us this evening that would like to address the council? I see Larry Olson has his hand up. I'll acknowledge you first. You have the floor for three minutes, sir.
Thank you very much. I hope I can be heard. I simply wanted to thank Manager Bender and his attorney Jim Lance for their patience and consideration as we've been trying as the Tobacco Prevention Coalition of the county to bring tobacco retail licensing ordinance to the city of Wilkes. It's beginning to get closer. Brian has put it on the agenda for our next meeting, or your next meeting, which is March 9th. I just want to say I am very appreciative. If any of you have any questions, or if there are details about it that trouble you, we would be very happy to do that. I know Attorney Lance has been and will be in further contact with staff, Bobby Ughum in particular, and we can bring you a document that will make the world safer and a lot healthier for the kids of Wilkes. I just want to say thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have anybody else that would like to address the council this evening? All right, having heard no further public communication, I'm going to move on to public matters. We have none before us. Enactment of ordinances, we have none before us this evening. So next order of business would be the consent calendar. We have one item, the city council minutes. None were presented, so we don't have anything there actually either. There's no activity report, no commissions, agencies, and authorities. So moving very quickly this evening on to the city manager reports and recommendations. So I'll turn it over to City Manager Brian Bender.
I think that's about the quickest we ever got to this part of the agenda.
That's our record.
Yeah, even when our technical lynch is here. What is in the packet and for your consideration tonight? It's more informative items. You know, if the council traces back to about a year ago where the council and the staff put an effort together to compose goals for the city, and eventually they were adopted. And then during the summer and then back in the early fall, I presented a work plan based off the goals that the council agreed upon. And, you know, I think the goals, obviously, they're much more than aspirational items for the organization to follow. There are some very specific tasks. Some of them are very long geared, and then, you know, we don't have the resources, i.e. staff or the financial means to implement them fully across the board. But I think this is a good opportunity to do this, stop, take a look, chart our progress. And this was really a 50,000-foot viewpoint of what, how we, what we have accomplished and, you know, kind of what we have highlighted. A lot of this was, you know, like I said, restricted to personnel, lack of personnel in key positions, or, you know, staffing transitions that we all incurred over the last several months. So that kind of hampered our ability. But the item that's in the packet, and it's color-coded just for ease of convenience, and I really want to point out for the items that, you know, we had made some effort on. And a lot of them were not specifically addressing that one title. What we were able to do is take smaller bites out of the larger elephant. We looked at other elements that we can look at to address. Were we able to utilize staff or some consultants? And build a foundation on some of the larger projects that we need to accomplish. So that's what's before you. The last time the council saw some of this material, like I said, back in the fall, you have to have it quarterly and what kind of the agenda, as we noted, with kind of a light agenda tonight, I wanted to put this on here. I thought it was timed by timing in between the first and second quarter of 2022. And, you know, we have a solid budget now in place. We have a finance director who's helping us to execute the budget. And this is really going to set us up when we start working with the council on proposed budgets for 2022-23 and eventually we roll into a two-year budget cycle afterwards. So, you know, I don't want to, I can go into the details on the specific items, and I don't, you know, I don't continue to do that. The work plan hasn't changed, and the goals that the council adopted has not changed. This is basically the tool that I use to track when I meet with department heads when we have department meetings, and this is what's coming across my desk in light of the stated goals.
If I might comment. I really appreciate the fact that we have very detailed information under each goal that tells us where we're at and where we're headed. I think that's a big improvement for this council, and it really goes to what the vision is and the plan and how to get there. So, well done.
Matt, you have a question?
Yeah, I just, when the schedule is following each task, some of those aren't, we're not on that schedule. Is that just because that was then, you know, a month or so ago, and a few of them are not realistic to where we actually are right this minute? Is that the case? And...
I would concur with that. I guess I want to throw it out there as well as kind of to help the council understand. When we worked last year on composing these goals and refining them with staff input and got them to a point where the council was willing to adopt them, one element that we didn't really include in all that discussion was scheduling. So it was kind of rubber sheeting the tasks and goals to a schedule. And I had some discussions with council members since the time we adopted them that, like I said earlier, these were not aspirational. They were, you know, based on ideals that kind of opened ended. These are very specific. These read like tasks, and that's why it's kind of a plan. It's a work plan for the organization as we secure our finances, secure staffing in key positions, and know that there's important dialogue with the council and what your expectations are for the organization. I think this is going to refine a little bit, but at this point, as we're gaining momentum, I think the scheduling is kind of secondary, but it's more a tracking device to look at what we're accomplishing. Only the direction, I guess it's less what we accomplish, but where we need to go.
That's, thank you. That's good. I know that for myself, when I have a long list of things to do, I will sometimes think I'm going to get these, you know, a list of 15 things done this week and then other things next week, and quite often they keep moving, move down the schedule because I can't get as many things done as I thought I could. So I'm sure that's the case in the city with the staffing and resource limits that we have. But as we do these quarterly reports, I'd like to see, you know, how that evolves. And it isn't important that we always keep the schedule, that we know when we defer something. So, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
I think that's another key aspect of this, is, you know, the council is now receiving those monthly reports. There was attempt early on to kind of merge some of the goals to the reports, and then they got kind of unyielding in its readability and interpretation, and it was asked to kind of pull that back. But I think the monthly reports are a good indication, they're a good index to show how we're addressing some of these larger issues and keeping the council informed that, you know, once again, maybe not a specific task is being charted directly, but, you know, there's more than one way to accomplish something. And once again, so now we shift from being a work plan to a goal. We're looking at, okay, maybe we can't address it head-on, but if we take a slightly different tack that, you know, we can gain more momentum or utilize the resources, either what we have financially or staff or the talent, the skill sets, we can apply them uniquely. And that's one of the great things with this organization being smaller. We can change course pretty quickly. We can, when the winds change, we can follow the breeze and move along. We can change tack without, you know, on the bout relatively quickly. Sorry for the nautical terms, I'm just throwing it out there.
I guess I would just also reiterate what Mayor Rodriguez said, that I really appreciate that we are tracking this, and we are being specific, and we're making progress towards our goals. It's a wonderful report to us. Thank you.
Thank you. If that's all I have on this topic, if there's any other specific questions. The only other item I want to bring to the council is that, once again, we had our five monthly, or five weekly update with Dr. Corin and the Health Department regarding COVID with the city managers. Dr. Corin's comments today were pretty positive. All the trends are going in a good direction. Yes, the mandatory masking in public settings indoor will require, will stay in place at least to March 15th to the 16th, when he'll take another look at it. I asked some specific questions about the opportunities to hold larger events when spring summer arrives, and at this point, that looks like a very doable situation. So I know all our GAs in this county are looking forward to hosting our traditional events and bringing visitors back to the region in this wonderful part of the state. So hopefully, none of the variants that are seen to be overseas, stay overseas. And once again, I'll take this opportunity, encourage everyone, if you're eligible for vaccinations, please do it. So, that's what I have.
I have...
Yes, Eric? Brian, I know it's pretty early in the year, but I think you'll be on track for kind of an April, May, et cetera, holding into a budget, using the spec, it wouldn't be in that direction at this point, or, I know we're early, so I'm just kind of asking ahead of time.
As far as budgeting?
Um, yeah, I mean, normally we have budget meetings in April, May, et cetera. So at this point, have you set any dates yet or anything at this point? I know we're early.
Yes, we have several discussions, and you see Manny there, just trying to jump in on that. You know, it's really helpful now that we have the finance director right two doors down, three doors down, in City Hall there. Manny's been holding meetings with department heads, you know, looking at, you know, their needs, where they currently are with a financial aspect, and then what we're looking at for 2022-23. Manny's starting to put together the midterm or kind of slightly off midterm mid-year budget amendments that kind of come before the council. I know he's anxious to give that to the council for your consideration. But, you know, in a short answer to your question, yes, we are ramping up our budget. I think we're going to do it slightly different this year, but, you know, the same result is to maximize the return on revenues that come in and provide the services to the residents. Thank you very much. Manny, do you want to respond to anything there?
No, that's clearly correct, because that's pretty much where I was at right now. I am not ready to send out a memo to pretty much most of the heads of departments in order to be able to gather up information associated with the mid-year adjustment. And then after that, we'll start setting dates in terms of when we will go through individual budgets for each of the different departments. So, pretty much where we're at right now.
And just as a add-on there, we already had one session with the Finance Committee, and definitely my philosophy is to utilize the committees, attending committees as often as possible. So we're probably going to be staging another Finance Committee meeting sometime in March, kind of ramping up the early preliminary stages of budget creation. So, thank you.
Okay. Was that everything for your manager's report?
That's the long and the short of it.
Okay. All right, moving on to Item 9A, is an adoption of resolution establishing the appropriation limit for the 2021 fiscal year pursuant to Article of the Constitution of the State of California, and the pending staff member will be Director Roscoe.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and council members. Tonight I'm bringing before you the adoption of the resolution establishing the GAN or appropriation limit report for the fiscal year of 2020-2021. The issue behind the GAN spending limitation initiative is that it is a constitutional spending cap approved by voters via Proposition 4 back in 1979 during a special occasion, which was updated in 1990 by Proposition 111. For the fiscal year 2020-2021, the appropriations limit for the city is calculated to be at $7,538,889, which is well over the appropriations subject to the limit, which was calculated to be at $3,324,923. The city's revenues were under the appropriations limit by about $3,757,966. So with that, finance recommends that the city council adopts the resolution establishing the GAN appropriation limit for the fiscal year 2020-2021. And with that, I'm also willing to answer any questions you guys may have.
Councilmember Strong, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I just wanted to clarify in my mind, is the spending limit is basically the maximum that, under the state law, we could spend or appropriate? But we are way under that. Is that right?
That is correct. Actually, the appropriations are associated with the tax revenue, and so it's a tax revenue appropriation. The idea behind it is it limits the amount that we are able to appropriate per any given tax.
I understood correctly then. The other thing, I had a quick question on the attachment, the financial statistical tables, appropriations from 79, 1979 to 2021. It refers to Series 1, Series 2, and I didn't see that explained anywhere. What was that? And is that the cities? Yeah, just...
There's a little bit of a sweep behind that, but basically, the long and the short of it is back in 1987, tax receipts exceeded the game limit appropriations at the state level, and the state had to refund about $1.1 billion surplus revenue back to the taxpayer. So what ended up happening after that is there was an adjustment, which was Prop 111. That was the 1990 adjustment, and that takes us back to a reorganizing of the base. And I think they used 87, 86, 87 numbers in order to be able to redo that. And then, and that was Phase 1 and Phase 2, if I remember correctly. And so there's a recalculation associated with that, and it also adjusted what we were able to utilize as our growth or metric to do our calculation. And if I remember correctly, there is also one other component that kind of escapes me right now. Oh, gas tax improvements were put in the calculation.
Okay. Basically, what I'm hearing is, I don't really need to understand all that. I hope that's the case, because we're obviously way under that. So, thank you. If you want approval of the staff recommendation, I will still move.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll open it up to the public. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to address this matter? On list number two, did you have something to say? Okay, maybe just a line that's not muted. Um, Greta, you're not showing up by a screen, and I apologize, I'm using my cell phone, so I can't see you. If you have something to say, just jump in, okay?
Okay, I do, thank you. I mentioned to Brian when I met with him earlier this week, that I just want to make sure that the correction has been made in the resolution on the fourth whereas. It mentions that this is for the 1920 fiscal year, but my understanding is that this is for the 2021 fiscal year, so let's make sure that's correct before we... And I'll still move, Kathy.
The corrections were voted, and it was court, and Manny's being recommended severely.
All right, we have any council members that have further questions or comments on this item before I call for the vote? No. Okay, so we'll call for the vote, Kathy.
Thank you. Councilmember Strong.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, our next order of business is the department's monthly reports. They are enclosed in the agenda packet. If there are departments that would like to discuss what they've included, that would be wonderful. I'd like to compliment the staff on what a comprehensive list that they put together for us of work that's been done. I was truly impressed with how much work has been done. And as I was reading through the list, I was thinking about how if you were setting goals, I think three years ago, people had come to us asking that we make the airport more of a priority, and what changes have been made up there and progress. So I think that's excellent. And then the utilities department, I think sometimes they don't get as much love and appreciation as they should in that department, and I was really impressed with all the work that they've been doing over there. A lot of work, so, good job. Do the department heads want to add anything in addition to the report?
Mayor Rodriguez, Secretary Development Director, I had a few additions, updates to the updates, if you didn't mind.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just wanted to key in on the fact that we have a kickoff meeting scheduled for Tuesday, March 8th at 6:00 PM to occur in the City Hall Community Center. This is our kickoff of our CBG Business Loan Program, so I certainly encourage any businesses that were impacted by COVID that are interested in receiving loans between $15,000 and $40,000 to benefit their business, to really emphasize the importance and benefit of attending that kickoff meeting. It is an in-person meeting, again, March 8th, 6:00 PM at City Hall Community Center. Anyone's welcome to contact me with any questions they have regarding that meeting. The California Conservation Corps Regional Director is excited to attend your fifth year April 13th council meeting, so they'll be giving you a project update and saying hi to the council and the community at that meeting. We held our stakeholder meeting with adjacent property owners to discuss the Wilkes Rail Trail project. I appreciate the neighbors that attended that meeting. We also have a public meeting scheduled for March 10th at 6:00 PM. This is a virtual meeting. We're putting some information on our website here and creating some flyers and gathering up some interest in that meeting as well. That meeting is really going to be an opportunity to give a project update, certainly ask questions, and talk through some ideas for the trail design. It's not really the meat and potatoes design meeting that we're going to get into later this year, but we certainly hope to introduce the project and sort of provide the brains for the types of things we're going to get to talk about and discuss, which will ultimately lead to the final design for our rail trail project. So, excited about that. And we did finally get some meaningful action from the ChargePoint crew. These are the folks that service our city ODB charging stations, and it looks like a technician could be visiting the site later this week or next week. So hopefully, they will those chargers back online. And a little bit of clarification, so with the stations having cellular communication issues, my understanding is that's impacting the ability to set up a session using your phone, but it is not affecting your ability to physically park at the charger and plug in. So we do still have people using the chargers, even though they're not working thoroughly. So again, it is interrupting your ability to schedule a charge simply using your phone, but it does appear that you can physically level your car into the charger and charge your vehicle. Unless council has any questions, I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit more information there.
Thank you. It looks like you gave us sufficient information. Do we have any other department heads that would like to elaborate on the report?
Any other members? Mr. Mayor, I think we can just jump to Chief Liz Aragon.
Okay. Can I hold on just a moment? We'll jump to Chief Liz Aragon so we can get him out and about again.
Yeah, I'm kind of looking at that blue thing over your shoulder there.
Hey, oh, my shoulder. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. I just wanted to kind of expand on the top of our report. There are some significant changes in the statistics from 21, 2021 to 2020. And, you know, if you look at your rap, we went from 212 in 2020 to 402 in 2021, and our citations also increased by a sizable percentage, as well as our cases. And you might get asked by some of your constituents, you know, what happened there or what was the cause of that. And one of the things that, and looking back on it, basically, 2020 was the height of COVID, and our response at that time, the city and my predecessors had been to scale back as much public contact as possible, handle anything we could over the telephone, and obviously still respond to, you know, emergency or urgent situations, and so we did that. In 2021, we were able to ease back on the restrictions on that, as well as really give some clear direction to our staff as to what the community needs or what the community was desiring of our police force, and that was to be visible, to be out there, to interact with the community, and to, you know, take enforcement action, keep the streets safe as much as possible, and improve the quality of life where we could. You know, 2020, it was also, you know, and it's not a state secret, that this particular desk that I'm sitting at was pretty much a revolving door in 2020. And when that happens to an organization, and especially a small police department, it really affects direction, activity, you know, what are we doing today, or what are we doing this week, you know, those kinds of things. So we managed to bring some stability to that, to the, you know, what we want to do... Uh, and this last year has seen, uh, that, uh, influx of numbers in our proactivity. Uh, and, uh, also 2021, for a few months, we had, uh, uh, pretty much a full complement of staff, uh, so that also contributed to that. Um, this year, we're, uh, we're continuing, uh, the trend of, um, uh, you know, being out there, being available, uh, and responding to those situations for police presence needed, uh, and taking, uh, whatever enforcement action we need to. Um, Julie just commented on the charging stations and it reminded me that, um, we had been getting several complaints, uh, regarding, you know, people parking at the charging stations that were, were, uh, gasoline-powered cars, uh, and, uh, after, uh, a few, uh, weeks of citations and observing violators and citing them, um, the message for the most part seems to have been received. And, uh, every time, uh, at least I check it now, it's, um, uh, either there, there's nobody there or, uh, the one that is there is hooked up. So, uh, we, uh, we are grateful to the community for their response and for their, uh, drawing, uh, their attention to us of, of that problem, which was significant to, you know, a, a good portion of the community. So, um, that's it. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to, uh, answer them. Brad, I have to grant you. Sorry.
Hi, thank you Chief. Um, thanks for the, um, further clarification on your report. I did have one question under staffing items. You indicated that we are currently recruiting for three officer positions, one C S O, another dispatcher and an S R O. Are those six positions total that you're looking for or those three that are mentioned out are the three officer positions? I wasn't quite sure.
Uh, those are six total, uh, positions. The, the three officer positions, police officer positions are basically that, uh, separate from that is school resource officer. Um, the community service officer is in a non-sworn, uh, position, uh, that, um, helps us out with, uh, other duties that, uh, when we have on, they free up the patrol officers to, to respond to calls.
Looking for three sworn officers as well as the S R O, C S O and dispatcher.
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
If anybody's interested in our dispatcher position especially, we're gonna be setting up a testing, uh, uh, date, uh, in the near future. So if anybody in the community, uh, is interested in, in, in getting into that line of work, I encourage them to, uh, uh, come and apply.
Thank you Chief.
All right, what's here from Kenan O'Shea in Public Works?
Good evening, world, again, Mayor and, uh, councilmembers. Um, Brian asked me if this kind of elaborate a little bit on my, uh, submission for the February monthly regarding project new zones. And, uh, this is something that's kind of been coming together lately over the last few months. Um, it's a nationwide program, this being off of air, you know, counties, so they've been doing, um, walk audit, holding community summits and, uh, meetings with, with individuals in, uh, cities and counties to kind of help identify local, uh, office projects and things that they can sort of, um, help us with through funding and, and their organizations. So, um, some of these kind of include, uh, the roots especially include strengthening walk and mobility, um, increasing street connectivity and helping us work towards a complete streets program, um, a parking space plan and active transportation plan. So I just kind of wanted to highlight those, um, as they retain the Willets because those speak to the council's goals. And, uh, they're getting ready to host a series of kickoff events. Um, these will include suddenly, really activities, food, some giveaways. Um, first one is scheduled for Ukiah on Saturday, March nineteenth at, uh, Alex Roelofre Recreation Center from eleven to three. And, uh, then we're gonna have another one on the twenty-first of May of the drag. And then they're gonna finish up with Willets in time in, uh, June. They're looking to start scheduling in April. Um, if anybody's interested in, in finding out more about what they're, what they do, you can look them up at W W W dot M E C dot zonesproject dot com. And you can check them out on Facebook and Instagram as well. So I just wanted to make that information available to the council and, uh, for the good of the order and the public.
Thank you for the information. Um, do we have any additional comments from the engineering department? Okay, what about utilities? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Andrea.
I'm sorry, this is Andrea, uh, Trincato, project manager, and, um, we've, uh, our main focus at this time is, uh, preparing water and, um, with the aim to, to get it to, uh, council by late March, um, and so we are, we're, uh, dedicating our attention to that at this time.
Right, thank you. Um, I want to see Kathy, do you have anything additional from the airport?
I do not, thank you.
Yeah, lots of good work happening up there.
We're very busy.
And then what about utilities?
Hi, this is Scott Herman, uh, Public Works Director. Yes, I have a, a couple I'd like to add. Um, we, we did start the flushing program, um, moving full force. Um, we have completed all of, uh, East Hill, um, Bethel Road, Hill Creek, uh, Shell Lane, New Subdivision, um, Brother Subdivision and Harris Manor. Um, next week, um, our goal is to, uh, hit Main Street in three consecutive nights on, uh, Tuesday, uh, Wednesday and Thursday night, March first, February third. And, uh, notices they're going out to all businesses on Main Street, uh, to let them know, um, typically we start that, that program, uh, nine, nine P M. at night to lessen the impact on the local businesses. And usually if it goes good, two, two A M. they finish up, um, uh, all hands on deck. Um, I want to thank the Public Works Department, Water and Waste Water for all their contribution, um, to get in this building. Um, on, on another note, um, anticipating a, uh, a variance on the early installation for the dam boards, um, for March first, um, hopefully we'll receive something, uh, been, been in contact with Division of Dam Safety, so just wanted to update you on that so we can capture whatever bit of rain we get after that March first date. And if you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Uh, one question, is there any, um, prediction as to how much the flushing is going to alleviate the groundwater complaints that we've had?
I, I would say about ninety percent. It's a big, that, that, that's, uh, the main concern is it hasn't been flushed in, in the last two years, uh, due to water. This year, um, we have the groundwater plant, um, which is offsetting, you know, the surface water, uh, treatment plant as well as, um, the reservoirs are, are still, uh, trickling over the spillway. So we're not, we're not digging into the, to the storage of the, of the surface water reservoirs.
Great, thank you.
I have a question, Sabrina?
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Um, Scott, I've had several residents ask me if it's, um, because of the lack of rain in January and, and most of this month, um, is it time to consider voluntary, um, water reduction, water use reduction? Have you any thoughts on that?
I wouldn't say at this time, um, I think naturally we, last year, um, we, we instituted the stage one voluntary and, um, I think, you know, the city as a whole, the residents as a whole, uh, are aware of, you know, the situation, um, throughout California, obviously. Um, but I, I don't anticipate that yet. Um, we're keeping an eye on it. Like I said, the, the reservoirs are still, uh, going over the spillway, um, at this time. And if we can add those splashboards, um, if on March first, then we can capture everything else, um, beyond that date. And hopefully in the past, we've been fortunate enough to get enough rain to fill the reservoirs.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes, Scott, um, I'm not sure if I read it right, but it looked like there may be funding for, for drought or water resilience. Have you seen anything out there in your, uh, travels, so to speak?
My understanding, um, in talking to Rod Wilburn as well, um, there, there is a lot of, um, funding out there for, for water this, um, right now. So, um, we're looking into it, absolutely. Um, you know, one of the grants is, is for the groundwater, um, you know, treatment, uh, project and, uh, you know, it's five hundred and fifty thousand that we've secured. So, um, but yeah, as they come up, we will definitely investigate and, and look towards, uh, utilizing them.
Thank you, Scott. All right, moving on to city council announcements, communications and reports. I'll start with our, uh, Vice Mayor, Greta Connie.
Nothing to report, I had no meetings in the last two weeks.
Councilmember Strong?
I am pretty sure, um, I announced last meeting, um, the M swap board met on, um, the day after our last meeting, I guess it was, actually it was in between. Anyway, um, it was the, I think, shortest meeting we've ever had, things are relatively smooth. We're still looking to replace, uh, the Forward Waste Management Director position, um, but everything else is going along fine.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Uh, no, other than I think me and Larry have a water wastewater meeting as well. Uh, but I've got no other meetings.
All right, councilmember, uh, Larry Stransky?
Uh, Kerry just announced our, our meeting tomorrow.
All right, and then, uh, I had an M T A meeting today, but there was nothing of any significance that pertains to the community. It was, uh, just routine business. And, uh, let's see, how about good and welfare? Go ahead, Kathy.
Um, yeah, just wanted to announce that well is, um, first of all, we're, we're gonna be having a newsletter come out, uh, in about a week and I'm gonna include an article that kind of very briefly summarizes all those department reports that we got, uh, so people know what's going on at the city. And yes, I was also very impressed with how much was going on, uh, and I think the public needs to know, so I made a shorter version that they might actually read. Uh, and we're also, well, is also planning to sponsor or, um, a, a forum online about fire preparedness because the fire season is starting now, unfortunately. Uh, and so we already have, um, Scott Crady coming to that and several other, um, hoping for the fire chiefs, et cetera. So that's gonna, the date is yet to be determined, but, um, I'll let you know in our next meeting. And in May, we're planning to have a candidate forum for the, uh, primary election that takes place on June seventh and there's quite a few interesting, um, races there. Thank you.
All right, we have nothing for close session this evening, so that brings us to adjournments. If there's no further matters, we will adjourn at seven nineteen on this evening. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.